Thank you for all these questions.
Good evening, and welcome to the Sioux Falls candidate, full of big candidates. My name is Deborah All and I'm the board president of this county area. The chamber like throwing wood when they were in the lobby, like they call it the chamber of the chamber office, off with strength and form, to the women, legal women voters, and they partner with them so many times every time. My moderator tonight will be Carol Lewis, who is a member of the women's voters, but she also is former student coordinator.
Tonight, we're going to have three candidates speaking. The order will be Todd Tulkey is number one, Kate's number two, and Peter is number three, Peter Pischke, and Kate Parker. And that'll stay all night long, but I'll start with different people and rotate through quite equally. Remember to raise your card to get a candidate answered, a candidate question submitted, and try to phrase the questions so that everyone, each of the candidates can answer. We will not read questions which are addressed to individual candidates. Please understand that I may combine questions on a similar topic, and if your question doesn't get asked today, feel free to stay after the event to speak with the candidates or contact them by phone or email. We ask at this time that you silence your cellphones, so do we have any dings to happen? Please silence your cellphones, and we ask that you not have any conversations in this room, but take them out to the lobby. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves and answer why did they decide to run, and they may also take this opportunity to address anything that is of special interest to them in those two minutes. Then we will move on to the questions, and candidates will have 90 seconds. I will pay attention to Harriet Scott, who has colors that mean things about minutes, and the red one means stop. I've recently been a docent in the school district in the music program, and I learned a technique to have people stop talking in the classroom, so I will use that if I need to. There is no rebuttal time, and candidates will all be given an opportunity to answer each question. I will rotate which candidate is first to respond to a question. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have an additional two-minute closing statement to comment further on issues brought up or to comment on a topic that was not covered in the questions. Candidates, timers are located in front of you, and they have signs to let you know one minute, 30 seconds, and time's up. Then, thank you for following the time limits in advance, and if you go over the time, I will let you know. We'll start with introductions. Todd?
Tulkey.
Tulkey, Kate Parker, and Peter Pischke. I have to eat it, okay? Very good. So our very first question, our first person to speak will be Todd for two minutes, and then we'll go to Kate and to Peter.
As we have figured out, my name is Todd Tulkey. I'm asking for your vote to continue to serve as a school board member, representing almost 24,000 students, staff, and the taxpayers. Much has been accomplished over the last several years, including the raise of teacher pay, a long overdue upgrade to Howard Woodfield House, the hiring of a superintendent that has increased the quality of our school district and increased our graduation rates, and also helped put together a strategic plan. There is still a lot to do, but I truly feel that we are heading in the right direction and things are going well. I hope in the upcoming years, we can continue to increase the graduation rate, embrace the opportunity that our diverse population offers us, open more doors for secondary education, whether it be college, technical school, or a trade school. This will help in increase the quality of our workforce. We need to provide students with the tools so that they may obtain quality employment and enticing them to stay in Sioux Falls. We must make sure that each and every student has the opportunity to enjoy a quality, successful education. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate?
Good evening, thank you for being here. My name is Kate Parker. I have been a member of the Sioux Falls School Board for nine years now. Last year, I had the privilege of serving as vice president, and this year, I'm president of the school board, and it's been a privilege to serve in that capacity this year. I've learned a lot. I have dedicated this time that I've been on the school board, ensuring that all of our kids receive the very best education, one that's both enriching and academically challenging. I have dedicated my time to ensuring that teachers and staff feel supported and have the resources they need so they can educate and nurture our kids. I have dedicated my time to listening, listening to students, listening to staff, and listening to our community. I have two boys in the school district, one in elementary school and one in middle school, so I feel I have the experience as a parent and as a current school board member that make me a good candidate for school board. We do have challenges and opportunities in our school district. Our facilities discussion that we're going through right now, I think, is a very important one, and one that requires someone with some experience on the board to see us through. It will see our district through the next 20 years, and I think that's an important discussion we're having right now. I'll close just by saying it's been my privilege serving our community, and I hope if reelected that I will continue to be able to do so. Thank you.
Peter?
Excuse me. Good evening, my fellow Sioux Falls ladies and gentlemen. It's an honor to be here with you tonight. I am a product of the Sioux Falls School District, and to be here as a full member of society and to discuss some of the issues and worries we have for the school district with the school board members here is an honor and a privilege, and thank you for that. Also, thank you to the other school board members that are here in the room. I've noticed at least two of you. I know the third is somewhere in there, but I wasn't catching it. Thank you all, Superintendent Maher. Some candidates came tonight. They're hoping that we could increase the attention that the Sioux Falls public puts to our elections. Some we have here, we have Mr. Thor Bardin. We have, he's running for city council. Tyler Swanger, he's running for senate. Janet Brecky, who's also running for city council, and more. Thank you for showing up tonight and participating in the public conversation. I know, I just ate half my time. Conalisa Rice said that "education is the armor against prejudice," and for many of the ills in society that we have, education is the solution to it. I am primarily running because I'm worried about the mental health and stability of many teenagers. The suicide rate for teenagers right now is at the highest it's been in 40 years, and while I appreciate the efforts of the school district and staff to make, I think we could do even better, and that is why I want to join this illustrious school board. And that pretty much sums it up. Everything else, they said, I'm totally cool with too. It's kind of already taken, and thank you again.
Okay. We'll start with Todd, then go to Kate and Peter. This is a double question. What positive things have been happening in Sioux Falls School District? What could use improvement? District survey: While the district already surveys faculty, would you commit to a yearly survey of families, students, graduates, and community residents about what they see as major strengths and shortcomings of the district and its schools? Would you be committed to sharing the results? Subjects: School safety, whether families feel welcome and respected, understanding and agreement with priorities.
Are they all going to be this long?
No, but the double one is.
The first part, what are the positive things that we have going? There's many. I think that first, our facilities study is something that might be past due and move forward to help our district, maybe help the schools grow a little bit. And the negatives, I would say that that is also a negative. We're probably a little overfull right now, and that may be a little bit a cause of some of the behavior issues. I would also like to see our staff more reflect our students as far as their ethnicity. Now, the survey question was, would I allow a survey?
Well, they survey faculty. Would you commit to a yearly survey of families, students, graduates, and community residents?
You know, I'm one of five school board members, so after some discussion, I don't see that that would be a horrible thing to have, and would we share them? Certainly. We're open and transparent. I don't see that that would be an issue at all.
Thank you. Kate?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, Todd touched on this, and we have a strategic plan in place right now. It's a five-year strategic plan. It's a living, breathing document, does not sit on a shelf, and we have goals and strategies within that strategic plan that we are focused on. And some of those, with the first year of the strategic plan, we did see some upwards trends that we're really proud of. Graduation's went up. We did see a little bit more diversity with our staff, but there's always room for improvement. And our third grade reading scores aren't where we want them to be, but we will continue to work on strategies to get those up. So I think that we are moving in the right direction, and that strategic plan is truly that. It's our strategic plan, and we're working through the goals and objectives through that. In terms of a survey, I know that we've done surveys in the past with parents and community members. I can't remember the last time we did one, and I would certainly be in favor of doing another one if it's been, you know, more than a few years since we've done that. We do a staff survey every year, and I think that surveying the community and hearing from them is a very important piece to what we do, and that's why it's such an important part of our facilities conversation right now as well as with the community. So, and I would, as Todd echoed, that we would absolutely be transparent about the results, just as we are with our staff survey as well.
Peter?
Yeah, I'm glad there's only three of us, because that's quite a question. Okay, so, I don't know how we, I'll start the survey part, mix it up. Surveys are awesome. More research, more public input, more communication is always good. It can be very hard and tempting sometimes when the results you get aren't as nice. I think sometimes, because we live in the Midwest, we have a Midwest mindset. My grandparents are totally this way. You know, don't let them see your dirty laundry, you know? Put the best foot forward, and the rest of the stuff can kind of hang back. And the school districts and the schools sometimes do this. Totally understandable, but I think I would say that we need to be able to have a survey and be okay with whatever results come back. Last year, Mickelson, then candidate Mickelson, now school board member Mickelson, was telling how she was looking forward to a study they were going to do on pre-K students here in the Sioux Falls School District elsewhere in the state. Unfortunately, the SDA legislature killed that off. I don't know the whole, that's not an area I'm a specialist in, but I think that any research we do is great. One thing I will, okay, it is Martin Luther King Jr.'s 50th anniversary of his death. You look at the makeup, the strata of the Sioux Falls student body, and it's incredible. All the different languages are spoken, all the different races and ethnicities, all the different religions and different backgrounds, and there's relatively little friction. I had friends when I was in school that came from, you know, all parts of the world. I had a friend that came from, you know, Southeast Asia. I had another friend that had lived in Liberia and had seen, ooh, just awful, awful war and famine, and they come here, and we get along, and it's fantastic. That's an amazing thing the Sioux Falls School District does, and I would like to point that out.
Peter, you're first on this one.
Todd was first last time.
So is it flip-flop, or is it her turn?
No, it's...
Or are you going that way?
It's Peter. No. I'm sorry. One, two, three, three, one, two, so...
It's Peter.
It's Peter. Okay. One, two, three, three, one, two, two, three, one, then one, two, three, three, one, two. Okay. Peter, do you see yourself primarily as a representative of the community or as a representative of the school district?
Ooh, that's a good thing. So when I was talking with the STEA people, that's the South Dakota Teachers Education Association, it's a teachers union, they were great, and we talked about, you know, education, you know? Sometimes we think that while only the people with kids, they really care what happens at the school. Only really what happens in the school district matters to them, but that's not true. You can, I kind of look at it this way. The city council is dealing with the adults now, but the adults of tomorrow are in our school district, the leaders of tomorrow in our businesses, in our organization, our churches, the city council of the future, those kids are in our school district right now. So we all have a very vested interest in the community, and so when you are here at the school board, you sit on two great pillars, the pillars of the community, but also the pillars of the school district and the interests of the families and their children and the staff.
Kate?
So it's my opinion as an elected official that, or an elected member of the school board, that I represent the community. You're elected by, this position is elected by members of the community, and therefore that's who you should be representing. Obviously, we work very closely with the school district and as members of the school board, and, you know, we work with each other as school board members. You know, I think too, you know, I walk into a school, and I always have to tell them, like, I've got my parent hat on, just please don't think of me as a school board member, and maybe that's hard for teachers and principals to grasp or, you know, understand, but I'm like, I'm here as a parent, so I kind of see my role as a school board member in three ways. One is to serve the community. One is, again, just me being a parent and as a community member, because I'm affected by the decisions we make as well here.
Very good. Todd?
Well, I agree. I definitely serve the community, and in serving the community, we serve the school district. We look out for people that don't have kids, taxpayers, people with kids, people that don't have kids in school yet, people that have kids that aren't born yet. So we're without question looking out for the entire community, trying to represent them the best, and looking out for our school district, which is what we're elected for to be school board members on. So I would say we're definitely community members. We look out for the community, and the school district's part of that.
Good enough. The next question. With our legislators reluctant to fully fund education, how will you educate the legislators?
Okay. That is an excellent question, because nine years on the board, we've been trying to do that. I think that just continuing to have conversations, especially at the local level, with our local legislators, is key. I know that in the past, we have invited them in to come meet with us and let us show them what we're doing in the school district and how important funding is for us, just in terms of teacher pay and making sure we've got all the resources that we need for our kids. But that's what I would propose, that we continue to do, is just open our doors, invite them in. Hopefully, they're, you know, more willing to come in than they have been in the past years, but welcome them in, show them what we're doing, and let them know how important it is that we need their support for funding at the legislature.
Peter?
Okay, sorry, I didn't know who was next. I'm, I was a journalism major in college, not math. It's not my strong suit. I mean, the way it's where is a little bit loaded, heavy, but the funding is very necessary. And the problem, I think, goes in that the needs of the Sioux Falls, being so much bigger than the other cities, and maybe rapid city community gets close, is that our needs are so much different than what much of the legislature, I think, is trying to fund. And so I think that we're continually, well, just that funding, the way it's designed and the formula, is that there's just, always just a little bit, not enough, to meet all our needs. And, you know, I know it's very unpopular to bring this up, because we did bring a sales tax, and the public has been very kind to cooperate with that. But we'll have to have soon a very unpopular conversation about having another bond, because all our buildings are full, or past full. In fact, most are past full. The fact that we continue to operate, the school district continues to operate so well with buildings over capacity is a testament to our amazing administrators. But, yeah, funding, definitely something that will continue to be worked on, especially in the near future, but I imagine if things stay the way they are, will always be a fight between here and the South Dakota legislature.
Todd?
You know, I learned a valuable lesson when we went out to Pierre for the sales tax. You know, you go out and you're headstrong, and you think you're going to tell them what they need to hear, and they're going to tell you what you need to hear. And I found after many trips out there, if you just have a conversation, I learned quite a bit from them. Not all of them did I agree with, and not all of them did I understand what they were getting at, but we sat down and had discussions, and one, I sat on the phone for a half hour, and we actually had a conversation. And so I don't think it really needs to continue to be us versus them. We know what we need. We need some funding. They've got a budget, and we have to show what the importance is of the money that we need and how it would benefit the entire state for us to get that. So I think we just keep the communication lines open and treat each other like human beings and adults, and I think we can all come to at least terms on what's best for the state.
This is the first non-divergent question. Do you think school board members should have term limits? We'll start with Todd.
Well, I really don't. I know that's probably not the popular answer, but when I first started, I was told in six months, you'll have this in no time. I learn every day. This morning, early this morning, I spoke to a group, and there were some questions, and I learned from them. So I think having, I mean, you know, you don't want me 80 years old on the school board. I get that, but I think the more time that you spend on the school board, the more relationships you build, the more people that you get to know, and the more you appreciate what we have and what we do.
Kate?
Yeah, I don't, I, we're about to head off to a national school board conference, and I know of one school board member who has served her board for 40 years, and I look at her, and I don't think of her as being in a position where she can't serve anymore. I mean, I think she has a lot of value to her school district and her school board, so I don't know that I would say that we need term limits either. I agree with what Todd said. I mean, the first three years I was on the school board, I learned a tremendous amount, and I learned, I learned something new every day, and, you know, we're changing every day too, so there's always room for growth, and I think having some experience on the school board is important, as well as new blood too, but sometimes you just, you need to have that fine balance, I think, between the two, but I don't think that we need term limits.
All right. Before giving a very expected, obvious answer from the up-and-comer, I'd like to say that I really liked Mr. Tulkey's answer to that last question. It was better than mine. It was, it was a more responsible way of talking with a group. Sometimes the school district comes in on us. That being said, now, I, American history, it used to be until FDR, that traditionally, after a couple of terms, you would depart whatever office you were doing and move on to something else. But FDR said, new president, that that wasn't true anymore. We've kind of, America kind of been there ever since. I think Americans, especially young Americans these days, have a bigger appetite and a bigger desire for term limits, and so in my lifetime, I very well could see that term limits could come back for loads of things. Should I think there should be term limits for the Sioux Falls School Board? I think to a point. I'm not, now, I'm not saying that the people that are here are corrupt, or that they don't care, or that they aren't smart and professional. That's not the point of breaking term limits. The point is to bring in new eyes from new perspective. Sometimes even the wisest person can get tired and jaded, and maybe they'll just see things differently, and so that cycle of new people coming in can often bring fresh ideas and fresh perspective and fresh passion. Now, do I think there will be Sioux Falls School Board term limits? No, I do not think it's going to happen, so I wouldn't worry about it. But if, like, if there's a political will, and it does happen, awesome. But I just, just telling you where the political winds are right now, that is just not going to happen.
Peter, you're the first one on the next question. I'm concerned about reading achievement in Sioux Falls. What is the district doing to improve this?
The school district, okay, so this is a problem that, first of all, the school board, I do know, has tried different strategies as of recent. They just got report last month, it's a key program that we had been trying out. Turned out that it was doing less well than just a classroom teacher, and so the school board has tried different strategies out. I am concerned, because reading is really low in the Sioux Falls School District, and it's behind the rest of the state. In particular, some schools are much worse than others, and I don't think any one parent that goes to one of these schools really knows that their school is, might be considered in the scheme of things, a failing school at reading. Third graders, English language assessment is at 43 percent, and Conalisa Rice, that was her big mission. She said, "Today, education is the new civil rights." This is the new issue. They say if they're eight or nine, they don't gain a passion to read, then very likely they will never gain it." So it is a worry for a lot of people. So the problem is that we, the curriculum, the Sioux Falls School District doesn't have a lot of control over the reading portion of the curriculum, the common core curriculum, which is often found to not be a great one for building passion. They focus a lot on nonfiction documents, but not documents like founding documents, and nondocuments as in, like, the office. And that's not how you get kids to like to read. You get kids by bringing books that kids love to read, you know? I love dog books, and I love adventure books, and I love books about World War II, and those were the things that made me want to read. And our teachers are right here, and they're willing to just go at it and teach all their hearts out, and if we would be allowed by the state legislature, have a little more control of our curriculum, I think we could, we could do a lot of magic and really beat that score down.
Todd?
I think just the fact that we took the courageous step to stop the LIA program, finding it not effective, shows that we're keeping a close eye on our reading. We have to remember, you know, we're saying that we're really low, and we're really not. What we're forgetting about is we have a lot of English language learners, and for six months to a year, as we teach them to learn English, their scores are going to be low, and they're not going to be shining superstars, but they will. So we have to kind of accept that maybe we're not going to have the highest scores in the state or in the nation, but you know what? We're teaching some kids English that could be our workforce and could be people that are going to be productive members of our society, so I guess I... So I guess I, I don't hold a lot into saying that we're 42%. Our state's at 44%. I might be a couple percent off there. But I'm kind of proud of what we're doing. And for us to keep an eye on the at-risk kids, which we're doing, and we'll continue to search for what is the best way for us to teach kids to read.
Kate?
You know, we, it's been a big part of our strategic plan, as I mentioned earlier, third grade reading scores. And we are doing a tremendous amount to address that in the school district. We have the summer climb pilot program. We're in our, finished our second year last summer, and third year will be this summer. And that's targeting kids that maybe have fallen behind in reading. And, and the way we know that is through our new map assessments that we started. And we're, we just looked at budget proposals to even look at that into middle school. So we'll be using a new assessment tool to, data-driven assessment tool, to be able to look at each and every kid at multiple times throughout the year, and see how they're progressing in reading. Todd mentioned the, you know, return on investment with LIA. You know, we've done, we've just done a lot of research over the last few years on what we can do to increase reading, reading achievement. And as I said, it's, it's a big piece of our strategic plan, and it will continue to be so.
Okay, you're first on this next one. What is your opinion of the processes or process being used for the facility study?
Well, personally, I think we're off to a great start. We are in what we kind of call Phase Two right now. Well, we're moving into Phase Three, but Phase Two, Phase One was collecting all the information, collecting all the data. What do our buildings look like? What's our capacity at those buildings? What's our enrollment in those buildings? We then went into Phase Two, where we had community meetings, community engagement meetings. We hired a facilitator to help us sort of see us through this, this process, and I think it's a really good one. We held, we held three community meetings. I know that the administrators also held meetings with staff and students. We even heard some students that came to a work session and talked to us about what they feel like, what it's, looks like in their high schools. And we got perspectives from all the, all the different high schools. So I feel like the, the process is really good. We're listening to our community, because that's our job. Our job as board members is to listen to what the community has to say. We have a community-led task force that will start meeting here in April, later in April, two meetings in April and two meetings in May. And they will come together and meet and go over all the discussion points, and come to us, the school board, with a proposal or with some proposed solutions. So we're really hearing from the community on what you all think we should, we should be doing to address the facility needs that we have in our district. So I look forward to that conversation.
Thank you. Peter?
I think the way the school board is handling this is awesome, and I give them two thumbs up. This is the perfect way we should go about doing, asking the public about anything. The opposite, I just talked about the curriculum. This year, the Kirksguard, the South Dakota Secretary of Department of Education, said that we got rid of Common Core. We didn't. It was pretty much a bold-faced lie. When they did ask for public input, they decided to do this. See, they say public input in the documents, but you look into it, and it says, "Well, we asked 1,500 people with Survey Monkey." And Survey Monkey is not how you get real public insight. This is the way you do it. You, you bring it to the people, you let them say, have their say, hear their, their insights, their complaints, their frustrations. And then you go forward with that. I can't say, but not, I can't say enough nice things about the, the facilities meetings that they just had, and then they're going to have a facilities group. I think that that last meeting at Roosevelt High School, there was a gal that came up. She was a single parent, Lakota mom. She was, she told the group there that she was worried about her kid who was being bullied because he wears long hair, and that there was some other issues going on with behavior. And like, there isn't really a good place to do that, other than these meetings. And I know officially that the school board meetings, the way that they're designed, is to get a time at the beginning for public input, but it moves around what day of the week it is, and it's just a short little snip there, and then it's done. And I think because of the formality, the school board meetings, which is professional and good, isn't always the best for getting public opinion to vent their frustrations and issues. And if we will, we could have more meetings like that, awesome. I think that, you know, you want to make the city feel like they're connected to the school district, and their money is being spent wisely and properly. You have meetings like this, and they'll, they'll, you know, we'll see their side. They'll see ours. It'll be great.
Thank you. Todd?
You know, many years ago, Vice President Alberti had brought up that maybe we should be looking into the potential of the need of schools. And there was some public discussion, and it really didn't go anywhere. I think when you're told what you need to do, at least myself, I want the information, and I want to research it myself. So the approach that we've taken, or more so Dr. Maher, where going to the community long before the facility, facility study started, and asking the community, "Man, we're growing, we're busting at the seams. Tell us what you want us to do. Tell us what you think is best, A, for your tax dollars, and for the kids, and for the district." So for the whole process, what you didn't see behind the scenes was building up to the facility study. So I'm more impressed with that, and the transparency, and the ability to be able to say, "We want to know what you think." And so now we're into the phase where it was an incredible three meetings, where the public was able to stand up and, and tell us what we need to be looking at. And now the real meat and potatoes start, and I'm really excited to see what, what the committee comes back with. I mean, we really listened, and we're transparent. And this day and age, we hear that over and over, whether it's City Hall, whether it's the state of South Dakota, that we need to listen and be transparent. And right now, I think this administration is hitting a home run with that.
Thank you. Todd, you're the first one on this one.
Okay.
It begins with Dr. Maher. Dr. Maher recently spoke of the need to retain the Whittier School in that neighborhood. As a person who attended Whittier from kindergarten through ninth grade, I am very supportive of his comments. Would you be supportive of retaining a Whittier School? Why or why not?
Definitely. I am the current president of the Associated School Boards of South Dakota. And I had the opportunity to go to Washington DC for an advocacy group, and I, I went to, it was a whole seminar on inner-city schools in smaller communities like us. And it spoke volumes about this exact situation. Dr. Maher hit it right on the head. This needs to stay where it's at and serve its purpose. It's also a great place for us to blend people, a great place for everyone from every walk of life to come and learn together in the city, in a location that's in the center of town. I'm very much for it and agree with Dr. Maher's comments.
Good enough. Kate?
I agree. I, I live in the core of Sioux Falls, and I believe that investing in the core is paramount. Keeping Whittier where it is serves that community, it serves that neighborhood. And I think, I think we'd all agree that we need a school there, if, we need a school there. You know, one thing that we've done as a, as a school board and a school district is making sure that we do invest in the core of our community. We did that by, by building Sonia Sotomayor, where Jefferson was. We did that by building Susan B. Anthony Elementary, by where Mark Twain was. So we really reinvested in the core neighborhoods in Sioux Falls, and I think we will, I know we will continue to do that.
Peter?
I am a Wolverine, I'm a Whiter Wolverine. I went there, that's why, middle school. In my seventh grade, there was a teacher, Mr. Benedict, they called him Mr. B. He was really into the, I forget, it was one of those movies in the late 80s about teaching, that they're really popular. And he would teach that, and he would say, "Okay, everybody, say Ghanes." And that was the phrase, Ghanes, with G-A-N, in Spanish. My Spanish is not good. But he was an amazing teacher to me, that's really learning. And he was the teacher, I think, my first teacher I really had that made me feel like I could be a learner. Traditionally, I was not a very good student in public school. And it wasn't really till Mr. B. came along, that he showed, you know, what I could be capable of. I, you know, I'd really actually like to know what happened to him, be able to meet him again someday. Amazing, amazing man. That building has been there since 1922. It is a Sioux Falls landmark. That community is probably lower income, is probably, I would expect, less, oh, how do I can put it? They used to say the term broken home, but it's not exactly PC anymore. It's a tougher community, but the positivity that school can bring to that community is totally worth it, right? Because schools, they have a feel to them, and the communities that you're in, the neighborhoods, those schools are part of those neighborhoods, and they have a good influence. I live on Hilltop, near Cleveland Elementary, and that school is a landmark and a part of our neighborhood. And I imagine that Whitter is the same way for them. So yeah, keep with, if the building can do it, and we can keep the building going, go for it.
Okay, you're the first one for the next question. At what level or levels is geography taught in the schools? What would you propose to strengthen geography at the high school level?
Oh, this is the subject, this, it's this in language that they say Americans are really bad at. Mr. B. was also my geography teacher, and he was a very tough geography teacher. He wanted, we had to know not only nations, names, capitals, we had to spell them correctly, and like, he had a fun fact associated with every single one of them. And then he would make us draw our own maps, then, they had to be somewhat accurate. How he did it was tough love, essentially. He rewarded us when we, when we put in the effort, and he made learning exciting and fun, and made us, he treated us like adults. I think that was part of it, is that he treated us like we were learners, he was a teacher, but that we were learning together. You know, it wasn't the, the, sometimes the old Sunday school teacher way, where you feel like you're just dictating it now. Amazing man. I miss him. Geography is very, very important. I think it's something we should continue to learn, not let go, it is a harder subject. Let's just keep at it. I'm, I, no, that's all I got for you right now.
Okay, Todd?
Yeah, geography's important. I remember making topographical maps with my daughter in high school. I think it's, it's important to know where we're at, where you're going, and, and when you travel around. I'm happy with what we do now, and I'd like to continue what we're doing.
Kate?
Part of the question was, at what levels is it taught? I mean, I know at least elementary and middle school, it's, it seems to be taught at every level, from kindergarten up until, my son is in seventh grade in Social Studies, and pretty sure he's doing some geography there. I think I'd, I'd like actually to know more of the, I understand the question a little bit better, so I'm not certain where the, the comment about strengthening, strengthening it at the high school level. I just, I, I guess I'd need to know more information before I, I answered that. But, you know, I know at least at the lower levels, geography is sort of taught amongst all the different, different subjects, whether you're talking about Social Studies or a specific geography unit. But in terms of the high school, I'd need to know a little bit more information about that.
Okay. You're up on the next one. This is precise. What do you propose to make pre, what do you propose to make pre-K more accessible to all, with or without help from the state?
Well, that's, that's a great question. I'd love to make it accessible to all, but we would need help from the state. We would need funding from the state to be able to do that. I have the privilege of sitting on the Head Start Policy Council, so I do know and understand the needs that we have in our community. I think I, I reported tonight that we have about 190 students on the waiting list for Head Start. And that's, that's just the kids that we know about. I'm sure that there are many more out there. I know there are many more out there in our community that, that would be eligible to, eligible for Head Start. But as I said, I mean, unless we get the funding to be able to have it be school-based from the state, we would need that funding from the state. I don't see how else we'd be able to do that.
Okay, Peter?
Oh, pre-K, I have family members that I love very much that are pre-K, and they did have to wait on the waiting list. And that was very frustrating. My family members I'm thinking of are low-income. They do get assisted housing and some other stuff, food stamps, you know, to make, to make the bills and to make sure the kids get, get taken care of. I know that it doesn't matter if you have money, or if you're dirt poor, you want what's best for your kiddo. And you want that kid to do the pre-K, because you're hoping that, well, pre-K, right? That'll help the kid be smarter, learn, get them adjusted. We all want pre-K. I think that's pretty, pretty universal want. There is a difficulty about how do you pay for it? I think we need to see if we can convince the legislature, and I think when we're talking about the, the future bond referendum, that maybe we conclude pre-K, funding pre-K in the picture, just as an idea.
Todd?
You know, if we're talking about raising reading, this is a great place to start. But again, we, we can't do it without help from the legislature. I think it's a good conversation to have, but if we want kids to, to be reading proficiently at the third grade, this would be an unbelievable opportunity to have, regardless of your, your status or where you come from. I think it's really important to have kids coming into kindergarten well-established and able to read.
Good enough. Todd, you're the first one on this one. What do you think of the, what do you think of the idea to put all of the opt-outs on the ballot and let the people vote on them?
Well, first of all, when you mean all opt-outs, I guess I'm not understanding.
I didn't write the question, so, but it's an audience question.
When we discuss it as a school board, I'm sure the opportunity to take it to a vote would be there. I think we're a responsible enough school board that the people understand, we're not getting an opt-out just to stockpile money. This last opt-out was to help make sure we paid our teachers. With the half penny sales tax, there were some ramifications to that. And we want to make sure when a year like last year, where we, there wasn't enough money from the sales tax to help fund us, we had to pick that up and make sure that we paid the teachers. So I guess I don't really understand the question, but my answer would be, if it's a huge concern, we would listen, come talk to the school board. But it's, it's an important opportunity for us to be able to pay when we don't get money from the state.
Okay, Kate?
Yeah, I guess I'd kind of agree with Todd. I don't know that it's necessary to have it on a, on a ballot, but that's also because we have a process in place where we do talk about it transparently and openly during meetings, and we have, we hold a hearing, a public hearing. We have opportunities for the public to come to our school board meetings, which are the second and fourth Monday of the month at 5:30 PM regularly. And I think that, you know, those times are set, so people know when they can come, and they can come and talk to us. And we would be absolutely willing to hear from them. I can say, on the, on the time that I've been on the board, we haven't had too many people.
I can say, on the time that I've been on the board, we haven't had too many people come and discuss any concerns that they've had. I will also say that, you know, as Todd said, you know, this last time we voted on the opt-out in last year, we only took what we needed. We didn't take extra. We looked at our budget, and we made sure that we were good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and we made sure that we only took what we needed.
Peter?
I would like to say that I'm really glad I wasn't the first person to ask this question. I think Parker and Thoki have both given pretty good responses. That is very, that's very difficult. Right now, and it's not just here, it is in the rest of the nation, is the question about, what do we do with the sales tax? Because the sales tax traditionally is how, especially here in South Dakota, is how we fund things like public education. And of course, things are very much internet now, right? And I think the president was tweeting a tiff with Amazon about this very subject, what are we going to do about the sales tax?
We need to stay on local district.
Okay, my apologies. Is that, this is an issue that many people are dealing with. And hopefully, in the future, the sales tax will be rectified. They either will find some other form of revenue, or that the sales tax will be collected better. Yeah. That's pretty much all I got. I think what Thoki said in particular was dead on.
Okay. Peter, you're the first one on this one. Would you consider moving Howard Wood Field with the lack of parking that the event center brought?
I guess it would have to depend on the proposal where they would want to bring it. Like, it would be just, you know, a cost-benefit ratio. Maybe we could talk about, because the city, a bunch of land now opened up as a certain steel company in town says they're moving, and maybe we might want to use that, some of that land for the school district. I don't know. We have new, it's not developed, but we do have a bunch of new land that was kindly donated by, I want to say it was Denny Sanford, but I could be totally wrong, it could be the actual Sanford Hospital Group, anyhow. And that would also be an option, put it there. I don't know. This isn't something normally people would talk to me about Howard Wood Field.
Todd?
You know, I really wouldn't think that that would be prudent. Right now, we're more concerned about housing our students and having enough room for the students. I pride our board on the last several years for building a new stand, putting a new field house, having new turf, having new lights. And this is a field that all three high schools get to use. So is it like state-of-the-art bells and whistles? No. But it's new, it's good, it serves its purpose, and I think that moving it would be an expenditure that would be not frugal.
Kate?
Yeah, I agree. I think we've put a lot of reinvestment into Howard Wood recently, over the last five years or so. And I don't think it'd be the most efficient thing to go and move it now, especially as we're going into more needed facilities.
Okay. Let's see, we're coming back to Kate for this one. What is the current discussion within the school system relative to school safety? Where do you stand on arming classroom teachers?
I was hoping we'd get one like this. You know, I don't think that school sentinels are the solution to the nationwide problem that we're having. I want our teachers to be able to educate, and I want our teachers to be able to protect our students in case anything were ever to happen. I feel like that's what their job should be. You know, unfortunately, in this day and age, not just educating them, unfortunately, that's not just it. They are there to help protect our kids as well. But I feel really good about our safety plans that we have in place. We have a district employee who's a risk manager. He's a two-star retired Major General of the US Army, and he's been with us for several years now. And I know that he, along with the Sioux Falls Police Department partnership with them, that they look and review these plans every single year. So I feel really good about the safety plans that we have in place. You know, I have a, as I've mentioned, I have two boys, and after this last shooting, my 10-year-old was scared to go to school the next day. I was able to tell him that I try to do everything I can to make sure that he goes to a school that's safe, and that that's part of my job as a school board member. So when he complains that I have a school board meeting, I get to tell him, like, this is the reason why I do this. Anyway, so I feel really good about what we have in place, and I think our teachers should be there to educate and keep our kids safe, not carry guns.
Peter?
There were some, I'm trying to think of the name of the particular school district, a smaller, much smaller school district, Westphir, and they felt that the solution for school safety for them was a sentinel program. And perhaps that was what they were needed. Fortunately, we in Sioux Falls, we have resource officers, we have visiting police that participate in things like the DARE program. You know, I would be, I know Superintendent, at least Mayor, talked on the radio that maybe this isn't something we necessarily want to put a lot of stock and money into, but I mean, I'd be very comfortable if we made sure that we had a resource officer at each of our middle and high schools at all times, and then we could say, like, one that rotates like every three or four elementary schools, or something, some kind of proposal like that. I think the other part for school safety is mental health. Every single time that we've had these school shootings, they were either by students or former students with severe mental health problems. And the great author Tolstoy, this was one of the things he talked to Todd about, we're talking about reading, okay? Tolstoy taught that sometimes when people get really desperate and angry and broken, instead of just killing themselves, they decide to commit an even more egregious evil, and that is to harm others. We need to try to help our students before any of them get even near that place. The problem with suicide that we have in the school district and the country at large is a tragedy, and it's one that's affected my family, and has affected so many. And when that happens, when suicide happens, that leaves a crater that almost never can be healed. And anything we can do to make our students safer from the beginning, so helping with mental health problems, and at the end, so that we know that there's someone that can intervene if the worst possible events takes place.
Thank you all.
Answer it.
Oh, yes.
I'll be quick.
You'll be quick.
No, I don't think teachers should carry guns. If there's anything that we lose sleep over as a school board member, this is it. We all want our kids safe and our schools safe. We continue assessing our security with the direction of Bob Bray, our risk manager in the Sioux Falls Police Department. I think we've got to remain diligent and continue looking for ways to keep our schools safe and keep our kids safe. I have all the faith in the world in the Sioux Falls Police Department and our risk manager, so, no, I don't think that's a good move. Thanks for letting me answer that.
This will conclude our questions with 30-second responses. We'll turn now to closing statements of two minutes apiece. We do have many questions left. After these two-minute segments are done, I'll be glad to share what questions haven't been asked yet today. So this is your time for your two-minute, and it will start out with Todd.
Well, thanks, everybody, for being here. I'd like to thank all the people that put this together. My family's here supporting me tonight, there's lots of friends here, that's important, the support. I really want to thank Kate and Peter. It's not easy to run for an office, and it's not easy to sit up here and answer questions that we have got no idea what's coming. We spend countless hours door-knocking, proving our commitment, proving to others and other groups that our commitment and where our heart is and how important this is to us. I do this because it's a passion, and it's important to me. I want to continue doing it. I think we've got a lot going for us, and I think we've got a little ways to go. So I hope that you'll, first of all, make sure to get out and vote. If you think that I'm a guy that can help and can continue contributing to the school board, I invite you to vote for me. If you don't think I'm the guy that can help, please vote for the one that you think that will. Thanks for being here tonight. And I want to also introduce John Paulson, who's running for council, and then Jack Holbeck, I see, is here too. Thanks, and have a good night.
Kate?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce and the League of Women Voters for hosting and moderating this tonight, and for everybody here and your questions, and glad to see so many good questions. So I'm going to keep my closing pretty short, but I just wanted to thank you all for being here and asking really thoughtful questions.
Peter?
I would like to thank the League of Women's Voters for putting on this forum. Thank you to our host for leading us in this discussion, and everyone else that brought questions. Thank you for trying to stay committed to what's going on in Sioux Falls. It's not easy these days to put your head out into the public eye, and it's not easy to keep pushing on public people to listen and to stay on task. It's hard. I think right now our country is a little bit, a little bit not talking to each other. And when we do, we're not always using the nicest words. But, so the people that do take that effort, I mean, I mean, hands off to you, that's amazing. Keep at it. Thank you to the school board members here. People ask me, "Do you have a certain problem with President Parker or Todd Thoki?" And they're not really. They seem pretty nice people. They seem to really care about what's going on in the school district. I just want to, I think I can do a lot of good, and I would just like to serve our school district as a school board member.
Thank you very much. We would like to thank all of our school board candidates, not only for their contributions to today's forum, but also for their interest in serving our community. Good luck to all our candidates in the upcoming election on April 10th, next Tuesday, and we encourage all citizens to get out and vote. And you can vote between now and next Tuesday at the auditor's office at Minnehaw County Building. In addition, we'd like to thank Sioux Falls School District for allowing us to use the Instructional Planning Center, as well as our volunteers today. And we thank you, the audience, for giving voice to issues and concerns. We'd like to tell you that there, tomorrow on April 5th, is a mayoral candidate forum at 7 o'clock in Washington Pavilion's Belvis Theater, but you must RSVP on the chamber's website. And finally, join us at the Orpheum Theater on April 25th for a mayoral runoff debate, and more details will be announced at the later date. There are ballots here for you to look at. Sioux Falls School District is the first thing on the ballot, and so we expect to have the most votes to be cast in that. And we also know that there are seven questions. Just quickly, how does open enrollment help or harm? What are your thoughts about teachers' unions, and how do you want to work with the union to improve our schools? What's your assessment of New Tech High? Should we continue? With all the experts saying that our children are spending too much time on electrical, I think they mean electronic devices, how can you justify your vote to waste more money buying Chromebooks for every second grader and making that problem worse? Where do you stand on LGBTQ agenda being taught in the schools? Where do you stand on Islamic ideology being taught in our schools? Where do you stand on gun control? What is your proposal to keep schools safe? Are you for freedom of religion, including Christianity, being discussed in schools? What are some of your ideas to help the students who have health problems during the school year? And how would you work with local businesses to form partnerships to improve our school? And with that, let's give a grand round of applause to three candidates.
Thank you.
Yes. And it's my, it's my understanding, they're all willing to talk to anyone who wants to come forward. And with that, have a good evening.
Thank you. No problem. I enjoyed it.
Hello. I can't, you know, I thought we weren't having very many, and then-
I know.
And then it took longer than I thought. Three, four, five.
That's pretty good.
Six, seven, seven, eight, nine.